I'd like to call the City of Shelby Commission meeting order. First item on this list, here's our commission weekly reports, Commissioner Dowell.
Well, tonight I'm gonna attend the Department Board meeting. And Tuesday and Wednesday, I'm at Joyce High School with my help that I do, whatever. Wednesday, I've been invited to the EDC luncheon. Thursday, I'm going to be at the city's Wellness Park. And Saturday, I'm going to a dinner for the youth in Mason County.
Alright, that sounds like a pretty full schedule. I have three events that I'm gonna be doing all in the same day. So on Wednesday, criminal justice board meeting. At lunchtime, I will also be attending that EDC lunch. And then evening, there's a chamber after hours at Maple Glen, I believe. And on Thursday, wellness lunch, is that here?
Mm-hmm.
I like food, so I'm gonna add that to my Thursday. Maybe I will get that also. So that completes our commission reports. And next would be a general public comment, period. If anybody has something they'd like to say, they need to sign up. And come and we allow three minutes to state your opinion.
I'm Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Tom Davis, 170 West Bushy Road. I'm here again to speak in opposition to the reduction in the impact fees that are being proposed and will probably be voted on next Monday. And in particular, Mr. Mayor, you brought up the city of Othello a couple of weeks ago and Adam County, which sparked my interest because I figured, okay, there must be something here that we should know. So I called the city. I spoke with three people in the city, and this is what I found out. They've had 59 permits issued in 2015, one for an 86-unit development. They have no impact fees whatsoever, never did have impact fees. So that obviously piqued my interest there, and I asked them, what is driving your economic growth and your development, so on? And they said, well, basically, it's all about the surrounding communities that are impacting us and coming to us for homes, especially in Moses Lake, to the extent we're building even more expensive homes, 180,000, 200,000, when the normal home there, the typical home there, is about 130,000. And so I said, so you have no impact fees? They says, what do you attribute, how much of that development and growth do you attribute to the fact that you have no impact fees? And they said, none. And I said, well, that would be surprising. I said, so how is that, how do you pay for your impact fees? Do you pay for that in the general fund? They said, no, the developers pay all the impact fees. If they want the road, they put the road in. If they want sewer, water, electricity, they put it in. And I said, well, that must be a shock to these developers, especially since you're booming and doesn't seem to negatively impact a growth in your community. I said, so you're saying that, basically, you leave all the fees up to the developer? They said, yes, but we're changing now. And there's a proposal in front of the city council, and the city council is now entertaining impact fees. I said, whoa, how's that going over for you? And they said, our biggest supporters are the developers and builders. And the reason for that is they find that they can build for less when those costs are shared. And the council has realized, although it runs contrary to what most people consider common belief, that, you know, lower fees, more development, well, the council has realized we can do better work if we share and work as a community and have a community fund in the form of impact fees than we could ever do here. And we have more control over development. For instance, right now, if the developer wants to build three blocks off the street, they have to go ahead and provide the access to that development. And it's considerable, it's a lot of money. So the city of Othello is now entertaining having impact fees to inspire and spur growth.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Lisa wants to speak at the end, or they're coming right now?
This way.
Or just check out mine?
Yeah. Doesn't matter, let it jump out.
Well, you put H.
Okay.
Item number H, you wanna talk about that? Okay. Alright, there will be other opportunities in the meeting. So are you raising your hand, does that mean you wanna speak, or you wanna speak on H? I'm looking at a box, I'm not looking at anything else.
Oh, yes, sorry.
So do you wanna do it now, or do you wanna do it later?
For the impact fees, is that what we're talking about?
We're talking, well, that's what this show I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
This, you can talk about anything.
Oh, okay.
This is anyone. You wanna do it now?
Yeah. Regarding the sidewalks, doesn't the ordinance say that the city puts in the sidewalks up to 8th Street within a zone of the high-density zone of the city, but the people maintain it? I think that seems a little bit odd because if they have to maintain it, what do they mean by that, what is the definition?
We all do.
Oh, okay.
Anyone that has a city sidewalk in front of their house, you have to kinda maintain it.
Yeah, like fix it if it's broke, or repair it, like, or is it...
No, most people don't, but I mean, I mean, isn't that kinda the policy? It's not you're supposed to, you know, nobody does it much, you know? I don't do mine, you know, but it's our historic posture.
Recent changes in the law have shifted responsibilities, to a certain extent, back to the city, or over to the city as opposed to the homework because it's, sidewalks are public property.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Lisa, it's the most recent legal advice that I have.
Okay, thank you. So where is, can we have a map of where the zone where the sidewalks are? To, could be, if, or if not, you know, if they're there or not to request it? What do they mean by up through 8th Street? You know, like, is there like a picture that shows these are the areas that can have city sidewalks?
We have lots of pictures of the city. And...
Yeah, that would be nice.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, for working on that one for me, okay? Alright, we ready to move forward with the consent agenda?
Oh, I, Joshua, I'm about to speak.
Foster, you down?
Yeah, I'll just go right now.
Alright, okay, why not?
Just for the last minute's sign up. My name's Joshua Deal. I am the Government Affairs Director for Othello Mass Builders, your local building association. I wasn't gonna say anything, but, because I've gotten up a lot in the past two weeks. But since we brought up my counterparts and other building associations in central Washington who oppose to, or in support of increasing impact fees in Othello, I can't confirm that, but I just wanted to share that the local builders here have, we've met, we've talked, we support this proposal and appreciate the work that you're doing. There's been an average of two houses a year built in the city of Shelton, and that this reduction will spur, hopefully spur more building. So just to emphasize the industry perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah, you're, you may complete any time you want.
I just talked to a builder in the area that's been here for years, and he's waiting for the ordinance to be final, and he's gonna build.
Yep.
Just thought I'd throw that one in.
Okay, are we ready to move forward with the consent agenda?
Oh, we are. Yes, we are.
Okay, could we please have a reading of consent agenda?
Consent agenda, transfer in banking fees in the amount of $7,433.88.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
And I second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any further questions? Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Alright, there's no old business today, but we have some items under new business. And the first is the resolution of the city of Shelton amending the city fees schedule. And I believe that is, Kathy Meyer, you can talk to us about that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. Under packet, I've included a updated fee schedule with the temporary fee reductions that are directed to be included. In addition to that, there is a new fee for the message board application for those new city messages.
Yeah.
So...
Where is that, Josh, where is that on, did I, is that on?
On the very bottom.
On this one, is it, oh, at this page right here?
Yes, on the short sheet. The short sheet shows all the direct changes under every bottom.
Oh, there you go, I got it.
It's a new fee, so it's over to the right, proposed, display Moses, let's see, new message boards, $30 application fee.
So each person that wants to put something on that board, it will be, maybe thirty dollars.
It's an application fee, and I believe it's small in size.
That's correct.
You have to renew it every year?
It's for each message you want to display.
How long's that message run for, in a week, or a week?
Thirty days next.
Thirty days back? Okay. And we were talking about possibly opening that up to commercial businesses too, maybe? Were we, is that still, not at the moment, just...
That's a longer discussion.
Longer discussion.
Than we want right now.
This is mainly for nonprofits, right?
It is now.
Nonprofits, okay, just thought I'd throw that in. I like them, so. Alright, Kathy, now that was totally disruptive, your message.
That's okay. So if you look at the top of the form on the short sheet, these are the before, you know, the existing and the proposed. So under the sewer fees, we had sewer connection charge, where we had a utility application permit, which is $109 plus GFCs. And now it's, the application permit itself is zero plus applicable GFCs. For the city crew work, it was time of materials, and there's no charge for that in the schedule. Now currently sewer, we don't put these in, these are contracted out by the applicant. And then next to the contractor service and the multifamily commercial, those are just being removed. They don't, if I understand right, they don't really exist anymore. So they're just being removed. Under the general facility charges, there's two sections under sewer, one for ground view highs with slightly different rates, and then the general facility charges. And they're listed by the meter size, and you can see the existing, like, the 3620 is reducing to 1629. That is a, let's see, a 55% reduction of the GFCs. And you can just, you can see how they progress down. The existing on the left, the proposed on the right, that's a 55% reduction. The next section is the water fees, and we have our water connection charges, our utility application permit. Again, it was 100, this one was $117 plus GFCs, and the new proposed is a zero amount for the application plus applicable GFCs. Under the water, we have utility application permits. They're listed by size and meter. And they were always time of materials, and now there will be no charge for those. Under the general facility charges for water, again, they're placed by the meter size, and you can see, like, the three-quarter inch meter is 2,800 and will now be 1,0260. Again, that's a 55% reduction. Now, these are the very direct charges. In addition, changes, in addition to these proposed changes, if you look in your document, the very last pages, the exhibits, these were the changes in the attachments, but in the exhibits, Exhibit A, what was done is these are as they exist in the existing, but there's a note at the bottom, Note Number Three, calculating fee shall be 70% of the fee indicated. So rather than changing all these pieces, in a 70%, when they're assessed, it will be 70% of those fees that are listed in there. Now, that is, of course, a 30% reduction in all of these building fees. Exhibit A, rebuilding permits, Exhibit B, grading plan review fee, review fees and permit fees. And then Exhibit C is the mechanical permit fees, the same notes on all these. It reduces them 30%. And the plumbing permit fees as well. So Exhibit, let's go back here, A, B, C, and D, all of the fees on there will be assessed at 70% of those rates. So that takes care of the changes that are being proposed. And so that document you have in the back of your packet is completely fee-scheduled with all the changes in them on those below. And that is all that's in this fee schedule.
Yeah.
So at this point, if that looks straight to you, I would recommend that Commission price resolution 1088-0316 on the consent agenda for March 21st.
Okay, any questions or comments for Kathy? I have one. I think we need to probably look at some of these terms, like, I think this is written like in 1940 or something. I just noticed the term, "assembly nightclub." I'm kinda thinking, how many nightclubs do I regularly attend? Or what is a nightclub? I mean, just thinking that, we've kinda gotten, you know, the old dance band era thing, you know? So I might wanna think about what the new terms for that is, like barbecue bar or something? Or, you know, I just think that in some, well, not now, but, you know, when we, you know, that some of the terms...
These documents come from the building department.
So speaks to assault.
Well, I think they come out of a, they come out of a book.
Yeah, these are tables on the International Building Board.
So maybe I could go back there and talk to them about the term nightclub.
Well, wouldn't that be something that's open until two, a nightclub?
A nightclub for ours, isn't it?
I guess it's just from a day club.
I guess so. I just caught my attention just because, but it's not your fault, so. Okay, well, we've been through this, and we've looked at this, and I think this is an excellent step in the right direction. So, at this point, if there's any other, any other questions on this? Okay? Alright, so the commission does concur that the staff's request to place this resolution 1088-0316 on the consent agenda for March 21st, 2016. April 2nd is the effective date. The only question that I had, now, which bring up, this is a one-year moratorium, so theoretically, this doesn't end on the 2017 budget. This would go through the first three months of 2017.
Well, the way the resolution's structured, it just puts these in place, and when it's time to change them, a new resolution will be initiated.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay? I thank you very much. Alright, Foster and Pepper are here, and I'll turn this over to Dave O'Leary, item number two.
As you know, Waste Action Project is suing the city. They're suing the city over the C Street landfill. The attorneys that are representing this group are environmental specialists, that's what they do. We are one of many organizations, as I understand it, that have been challenged, we, by this, using this legal firm. Our city attorney specializes in municipal law. And they're very good lawyers, but they do not possess the environmental specialty that we actually need in order to give ourselves a proper, an appropriate defense. In other words, it's a critical time, and it's important that we have good legal advice given what's at stake, there's a lot of money at stake. Our city attorney is suggesting that we engage Foster, Pepper, not so much to help us, but to help them defend us. The affected business unit, where it affected, is the silo that is affected, is the solid waste fund. I wanna say that the fund is very well managed. The operationally, it's in very good, it's in pretty good shape. They do have reserves, although they're somewhat limited. But the utility is funded by the ratepayers. So whatever it costs us to defend the lawsuit, or settle the lawsuit, or get beat in the lawsuit, if that were to happen, essentially, the only way we have to go is to ratepayers. Also, it will cost the ratepayers to do cleanup, which we've been attempting to do. Frankly, and our preference would be to use precious and limited resources to do cleanup, rather than to pay lawyers regardless of which side they're on. But the best way to minimize the damage is to get good legal advice. So based on the recommendation the city attorney, I recommend that the city commission authorize the city administrator to approve the engagement for services of Foster, Pepper.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions, I'll try to. I just wrote sad over the face of this, because I know that last, the commission, this last four years, had made a choice, we made a choice to go and move forward and take this project on, and we communicated with Department of Ecology, which is our lead state organization. But at this point, we have no choice but to get the best legal advice and counsel we can. So I do support this. But I just wrote sad on this, because small cities like us, it's just, it's not what I think the legal system should be on an instance where we have done everything in the open and done everything that we could do. So I, people, I don't like to sue anybody for anything, or to sue anybody for anything. And, but my opinion is that we have no choice but to take this recommendation and get the other council to assist our council at this point, so.
As far as I know, and based on my recommendations, when we discovered that we had a problem, we have consistently and advanced the process of closing that landfill properly. And it's just unfortunate that that's not being taken into account right now.
Well, you...
Can you tell me off the top of your head how much is in the solid waste fund right now?
I think Kathy and I estimated it's around $200,000, which is just, which is way, way less than what we thought it's taking. Way, way less than what it was possibly gonna cost for the cleanup.
We have no choice, there is no choice but to get this council, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see a motion on here, I think we just are going to...
Set up, we just put our consent agenda.
Yeah. Alright, so it appears we concur on getting this extra council here, and we'll place this on the consent agenda for March 21st, 2016. Authorizing the city administrator to sign. Item number three, this is another, Dave O'Leary's gonna talk to us about contract.
Enough for today.
There you go.
The Chief of Police, some time ago, asked me if it was possible to create an employment contract for his service at the city. And I didn't find any particular objections to it, I just wanted to get it right. Essentially, what he was looking for would be to, he would like severance if he is dismissed without cause. I don't see any particular downside here, because we typically don't dismiss department heads without cause. They're admirable employees, but you generally need to develop a case even under the best of circumstances. So what you, so what we got is a, we define what is cause. And if it's, and if we do, and if we, if he's fired for cause, then there's no severance. Cause means that he's done something that he shouldn't have done, or continued to do something that was a, that he shouldn't do. There's no budget impacts, and again, as I said, this is really consistent with our prior practice. And the, so my recommendation is that you authorize me to sign the Chief of Police employment contract. The action date is next week also. I suggest you put our consent agenda unless you want to go into additional discussion.
Well, is there any discussion or comments on this subject? I looked for the, for the plate to me, and we talked about it. I looked at it, and I think that it's, it's a good, good stuff, so. I think what we'll do is go and place this on the consent agenda, March 21st, 2016, authorizing the city minister to sign. Alright, administration report.
Not, nothing more today, or?
Okay. And now's a general public comment, anyone else that'd like to speak, three minutes? We allow that opportunity, yes.
Mike Olson. I just wanted to, once again, voice my opposition to the reduction in fees when it concerns outside the city limits. As this is going through the process, the first comments from the mayor were that this was gonna be for city residents only. And now it's morphed into that outside the city limits, you get it the same break. As I stated before, I do understand the mindset that you're trying to do to increase activity in the city limits and benefit the city residences in the form of property tax, sales tax, B and O tax, and X, X tax. Anything outside the city limits, the city residents get zero for. And I still am just baffled as to what your reasoning is to do, to offer that. I haven't heard anything good, other than, well, now they're a ratepayer. Well, they were gonna be a ratepayer anyway. But I think it really, is a slap in the face that long-term city residents that have already contributed greatly towards these projects and the debt that we've taken on for the infrastructure. And in fact, it would be even a little easier to take if the county would, you know, not to say throw them under the bus, but they certainly don't give you a break if you're a city resident using county services. And I just, I just find it really annoying that you would offer this to people outside the city limits when they bring nothing into the city coffers for this opportunity to get. So I just wanted to say this, it's probably the last chance I get to say something, see if it's on the consent agenda for next week, but I just think that it's not a wise use of city resources, and I really do think that it's a gift to public funds, is my opinion on that, so, stuff there.
Alright, thank you for your comments. Alright, yes, did you wanna speak again?
Please.
Three minutes. Lisa, state your name for the record, please.
Lisa Brandon-Powell. I was wondering if there's anything such as a special proceeding rule to have an ordinance to act, to mandate for re-reviews for advisement votes, to actually have a poll. If both commissioners don't agree, then for the people to vote on issues or poll where they can put their, in a box, you know, where it's not so formal, so that, you know, the commission can re-vote on it? So we have, you know, more of public input, but not weighed on issue or amount of people, you know, because there's issues, and then there's people vote. So, you know, that's a hard decision to make, so maybe to give more time to reconsider was a thought. You know, that all three commissioners would need to agree on something. If not, then the people could vote on it if it has something to do, especially with the city property or a safety issue that is really highly debatable, that's not unanimous. My other suggestion or thought about a different issue, the C Street cleanup, is, I was talking to the person in charge of the environmental, I can't remember his name right now. But he said, if you, you know, email a comment, but if you go to the meeting, there's supposed to be another meeting, but they don't know when it's going to be, that one will supersede the other, they won't put both in, it would be like separate. So some people might not be able to put another comment in, but if they don't get to attend that verbal meeting, you know what I'm saying? So my thought was that to go and take and check the pipes and the cement for testing, because I was told that was, that building was used for experimental use. And Jason upstairs said that it was for germinating plants and different things for growing trees or whatnot. Well, that is usually pesticides. If you grow anything, especially inside, there's pesticides. You can't avoid bugs. So if they're putting things down the drain, you know, then the city's not responsible because it's their product. because it's their product, the building, who used it, the Rainier Building, from way back when. And a lot of the scientists from Rainier also was developing plastics, and you don't know what else they were developing for their experimental, you know? So, you know, I think, they said, well, we can't go in the building, and that's their building, we can't go in there and investigate what's in the ground, what's in the pipes, what's saturated into the cement. Why not?
Thank you for your comments. I guess we are at administration final touches.
Touches. No touches?
Our next meeting will be March twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, at six P M. in the evening. This meeting's adjourned.